I want to say good evening and welcome to our town hall. This evening will be an evening of education, questions, and I hope you go away with some very valuable information you can share with your friends, neighbors, and other family who may not be here. My name is Darcy Johnson and I'm the Executive Director of Prairie View Prevention. I will be moderating tonight and you will have the opportunity to hear from four panel members as they talk about their experience with meth, from their perspective in their field of expertise. After all four of them are done talking, we will open this up for question and answer. And I encourage you to think about what are the things I want to know? As a citizen, as part of a family, as a youth, what are questions I have about meth? I want to say thank you to O'Gorman for allowing us to use the facilities tonight. It's a great opportunity to be in a place where we have room for everyone and the ability to have our booths out front. Hopefully you stopped at our resource tables as you were coming in, otherwise I encourage you to do so before you leave at the end of the evening. Tonight, I would first like to invite Amy Marsh to come and talk from her perspective as an EMS educator for Sioux Falls Fire Rescue on meth. Welcome, Amy.
Well, good evening and thank you all for coming this evening to talk with us about the situation with methamphetamines in our community. As Darcy indicated, my name is Amy Marsh and I am a paramedic. I work for Sioux Falls Fire Rescue as one of their EMS educators. My career, I have been in EMS for over 25 years. I have been an EMT, paramedic, responding to a variety of calls during my career. And also, prior to working for Sioux Falls Fire Rescue, I worked for the Sanford Poison Center for about 12 years and had the opportunity during that time to work with the Coalition. And so I'm happy to be here tonight to give you a little bit about our experience as the emergency medical responders in this community and what we're seeing with methamphetamines. I'd like to start the evening off with just a little bit of definition about methamphetamines. We need to realize that it is second only to marijuana as the most abused drug in our state and across the nation. Other names include meth, chalk, ice, crystal or crystal meth. So white, odorless, bitter tasting crystalline powder that easily dissolves in water or alcohol. It is a highly addictive drug and it has a severe impact on all the users on their central nervous system. What does that mean to you as the listeners here tonight? What does it mean to me as a responder in the medical field? Methamphetamine tricks the brain into releasing pleasure messages. But what we find is the person is also coming down from the high of the drug, they experience a very severe depression and a low. How does the methamphetamine affect our central nervous system? It includes a euphoric feeling. Individuals that are using methamphetamines feel that alertness or wakefulness that they may never have felt before in their life. Feelings of increased strength and renewed energy. Feelings of invulnerability, feelings of increased confidence and competence. So what does that mean to the body and how does it affect each and every one of the users? With that, they have increased wakeful periods. These can be numerous days in a row of no sleep. Decreased appetite, increased breathing rate, pulse rate, blood pressure, and body temperature. All of these things also include an irregular heartbeat. So short term, there are many times that we see effects of individuals with cardiac events. And also because of those feelings of confidence and invulnerability, we see a lot of trauma and violence in that group. Long-term effects when it comes to methamphetamines is we see anxiety, insomnia for many, many days, mood issues, and violent behavior. We see paranoia, hallucinations and delusions. We see severe weight loss, dental problems, or you may have heard the called "meth mouth", and we also see a lot of infections due to an intense feeling of itching and they become like bed sores or bed bugs and they're little bites on their skins. When we respond to a variety of calls, we don't always know if the individual is using meth. We have kind of a good idea. Things that we may see though that give us indications that these people are using methamphetamines is they're very warm to the touch. They have a very altered mental status and a lot of times when they're using, they feel like they're indestructible, that they can't be injured, they can't be harmed, and due to that, they can become very aggressive and violent behavior can happen. We also see medical issues with long-term effects of respiratory. Because the drug is smoked, snorted, or injected, we see a lot of respiratory issues with individuals' lungs. And these can have long-term effects. You also see cardiac issues because of the prolonged use, the heart is not able to act as it normally should. And we do see cardiac arrests in a variety of aged individuals. But we have seen an increase in cardiac arrests in our young people and our young adults across this community due to long-term effects of meth use. We've also seen a significant increase in trauma. And when I talk about trauma, I talk about car crashes, I talk about violence, gunshots. We see the individuals that are using meth as individuals have an increased feeling of paranoia. And so they have an increased thoughts of homicide and suicide. And I'm sure Sheriff Milstead will talk a little bit about those type of responses in our community. But as the medical responder, we do have to be aware of those things and be aware that the individuals are not making choices rationally and we have to worry about our personal safety at all times. So when you look at a response to someone who is suspected of using methamphetamines, the overdose, the individual may not be aware immediately that they've overdosed on that drug. And once the symptoms appear, they can progressively and rapidly lead to death. As a drug begins to affect the body, the overdose can cause symptoms such as significantly dilated pupils, hyperthermia or high body temperature, but with sweating. If you know anyone that's ever run a temperature in your family, they normally aren't sweating until the fever is broke. But with these individuals, their body is trying to compensate for the high temperature that they have and they sweat profusely. Because of all of that and the overheating of the body, they become very dehydrated. And what we'll see is a characteristic dry mouth in lips and lack of urination. Most significantly, we see and respond to numerous individuals with chest pain, which is very fast or very slow irregular heartbeats. And that then leads to cardiac arrest, which numerous times can lead to death of the individual user. The last thing I just wanted to spend a couple moments on is the component of safety in your responders. All of your responders, public responders in your community, your local fire departments, volunteers, ambulances, law enforcement, this has become a significant issue for us and our safety. What we see are burns due to clandestine labs. We can also see issues with respiratory issues of our responders if the product is released into the air. And the most significantly is the trauma to your local responders by individuals who are using meth. And so that is what I just wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about EMS and the response that we have. And we'll take any questions here in a little bit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. I think it's important for us to get that picture of physically the changes we see with someone who is using methamphetamine, how it begins to affect the body and the overall person. The next person to come forward will be Ron Dice from DEA. He is going to give us an opportunity to see on a regional level, an overview of the trends of meth.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for coming tonight, for the parents and for the young people and for the rest of the community. Hopefully you'll pick something up out of this. But kind of so I can gauge everybody's knowledge on the topic, who's ever seen Breaking Bad? Okay? So what we're going to talk about isn't Breaking Bad, but the main drug in that was. And ironically, when I was stationed down on the border, I was a part of the production crew when they made the first series of that. But one of the points that the movie does portray is the super labs. And everybody's like, what is meth? As you heard Amy say, it's a stimulant. It is something that gets your heart rate up. It is something that somebody looks for a pick-me-up. And okay, so we know it's a stimulant, it's synthesized, isn't something that grows, it isn't something that you can go, you know, pick out of the ground or grow as a plant. It's something that is man-made. The main ingredient, anybody here tried to buy over-the-counter cold medicine before? And in the last 10 years, what's happened?
You have to sign for it.
You have to sign for it if it's got pseudoephedrine in it because that was one of the main chemicals that was used to manufacture meth back in the late 90s, early 2000s, and then around 2004 to 2008, a lot of states. And then finally, there was a federal act, Methamphetamine Act, that kind of restricted that. I actually went to a pharmacy last night to test it and see how it works. And Sheriff, it actually works really well. They scan your license, they scan what you're going to buy, and then there's a log of it. So now, as in law enforcement, we can kind of track where those packages are going if we see them later. Well, meth labs are clandestine labs. That's where you have people in a makeshift environment in their garage, their basement, in abandoned house. You know, I've worked labs that were out in the middle of a cornfield. They use a variety of chemicals. The ones that you would see around in the Midwest and around the country you hear about were all used making, using a form of cold medicine. But what we see now, I'm going to say about 97% of the methamphetamine that we see in the US is not your homemade mom-and-pop local labs. They're Mexican super labs. Or sometimes down in Southern California, we'll see some of them crop up across there. They're industrial size. They're making hundreds of thousands, up to a ton of methamphetamine a month. The reasons for this is because they can import the chemicals they need from China or the Middle East at great volumes and then they can rent warehouses down in the border cities along the coast of Mexico and have at it. They don't have some of the precursor laws that we have here in the US. Sometimes they do control some of the ones when we find out chemicals that are used to make meth or when chemists figure out a way to change the compound, they'll use and access other compounds or chemicals. So these super labs, what, how does this work? How do we know what's going on down there? Well DEA, we do have offices overseas, we do have offices down there that work with local governments that are in Mexico or in other countries to try and stem or to get these countries to understand what's going on with these chemicals that are being exported. The main ingredient in methamphetamine now is P2P. I don't want to explain, it's a really long chemical name, but that's the main ingredient that they're using to make the methamphetamine nowadays. It's not so much, you'll see every once in a while, Sheriff, I don't know if we maybe had, I don't think we had an active meth lab in Sioux Falls last year. It's been quite a while. I mean, that has so tapered down that most states in the Midwest have disbanded their meth lab teams because they're just, they're not active anymore. It's so much cheaper to buy it coming across the border. So we still see them, they're just nowhere near the threat. They don't produce the quantities. You're talking hundreds of thousands of pounds from these super labs compared to a local mom-and-pop lab might make a half a gram or a gram. Or, you know, 10 years ago, you could maybe get a half ounce out of them. So it's a significantly different game. So you heard the word, I think Amy mentioned, you'll hear it on TV, ice. Ice is also referred to meth, but it's referring to a very specific type of methamphetamine. It's referring to a very high pure quality of methamphetamine. Typically, in the chemistry world, a chemist will say anything that's 80% or above is considered ice. And what it'll look like, I've got a few pictures here, it literally looks just like that. It looks like ice. Or anybody's ever seen rock candy? Same thing, it'll look just like that. The drug dealers, if they try to dilute it a little bit for more product, they'll try to get it back to this original form because the look will, the appearance will assume by the sellers that, hey, this is pretty good stuff. So as I said, 80% or higher, what we're seeing now, I want to say in the last five years, most of the amphetamine, methamphetamine that we've turned into our labs is 94-plus percent pure. I can go back into the early 90s and, you know, we were lucky if we were getting 30%, 20% pure methamphetamine, just to tell you how things have changed and how accessible precursors have come. So the other thing I want to talk about is, okay, so we've talked about methamphetamine, what is it? Kind of where's it coming from? How is it made? What's the latest in the trends? What's going on? In the last 18 months, the sheriff's going to kind of touch on kind of the effects of methamphetamine. In my 24 years in drug enforcement, I've never seen the quantity of seizures that we've seen in South Dakota, in the Midwest, in the quantities and the purities are off the charts. And just to give you an example, in 2007, one gram of methamphetamine, and to kind of give you an idea of what that is, there's 28 grams in an ounce, and then there's 16 grams in a pound. And as I said, those super labs, they're making, you know, half a ton of meth a month. One gram was averaging about $150 a gram. In 2014, that was down to $66 a gram. Purity levels went from the same timeframe from about 60%, now we're averaging up plus 93%. What I've seen here in Sioux Falls is, you know, like I said, 94, 95% easily on everything we turned in. The seizures, purity levels are up, the seizures are up. Stats from 2006, seized on the border from the El Paso Intelligence Center, which tracks all the seizures along our southern border, there were roughly 2,900 kilograms of meth seized. That's about kilograms, so 2.2 pounds go into a kilogram. So you can double that almost to get almost 3,000 or 6,000 pounds. In 2015, over 18,000 kilograms were seized. So that's just a short period of nine years and we've significantly increased. The market for methamphetamine, the number of users that we're seeing, has been relatively stable. They're talking about 500,000, 569,000 users roughly in the same timeframe. So the users are, what we see happening is you've got more competition down in Mexico, more people creating it, making it, going out on their own, trying to expand the market into the Northeast, into other countries, into China, into Australia. It's something, if you don't get anything out of this, if you don't talk to your kids, if you don't know where they're at and educate them, somebody else will. Whenever I talk to young people or parents, the one thing I always say is, your scary drug dealer from, say, the Breaking Bad series or a movie, isn't some scary person. It's not going to be somebody that they don't know. It's going to be somebody they do know, that they trust, that's in an intimate setting, that maybe they're intoxicated with something else and their inhibitions are a little bit lower. And somebody's going to say, hey, try this. I did, it was okay. And that's, that's that moment, as a parent, that you need to be ready for, that you should have talked with your kids through, because that's the moment. That's who's going to introduce your kids. That's how 95% of the people that we talk to and deal with get started. It's somebody they know, somebody they trust, and they let that trust take them down a path that they will have a lifelong addiction to. And lastly, you know, no meth talk is complete without showing you some before and after pictures. Amy talked to you about some of the physiological and physical effects, and as you can just see some of these, what meth does physically to you. Thank you for your time and we'll take questions later.
Before Sheriff Milstead comes up, we're going to do, you know what? I was going to do the drawings next, but I don't have any of the tickets up here. So we can't do the drawings next. We'll let Sheriff Milstead come up and give us some information about the crime rate and what we're seeing in Minnehaha County. Thank you.
No, we're not drawing for Narcan tonight, but it's just interesting how my career has changed. I'm in my 44th years of law enforcement officer, 24 for the Sioux Falls Police Department. When I left there, just before I left, I supervised the drug unit, the multi-jurisdictional drug unit, which I now have deputy sheriffs working in alongside DEA and Sioux Falls police officers and the State Division of Criminal Investigation. I never suspected when I started my job that I'd be issuing my deputy sheriffs an antidote to heroin overdose. But it's in all my squad cars. It's in my car. It's in our ambulances and first responders in our own community. And while I'm going to talk about methamphetamine, I don't want to forget, and I don't want us to forget, about some of its friends like heroin and fentanyl that are now in our community and threaten the safety of our community. Just this winter, a couple months ago, I'm driving to work out west of town, I'm on Highway 42. School buses are out on the highway, it's school day, and I see a commotion ahead and it's a head-on accident. So I hit my lights and I pull over, make sure everybody's okay, check the first car load. They're okay, they're, you know, there's some injuries, slight injuries, but they're okay. Go to the second car and it's like, oh my God, there's no one here. I go back to the first car, now they're separated ways because it's a head-on highway speed accident. And they said, yeah, he ran to the cornfield and that's the last we saw of him, he's gone on a dead run. So I go back to the car, we get people coming, deputies coming, because I've kind of forgotten how to fill out reports anymore. And I got people now. And, and so the deputies get there and we go up to the car that's missing the driver and there's a loaded syringe with methamphetamine in the center console. And there's a dispense syrines with methamphetamine residue on the floor. And there's a construction helmet in the backseat. And the car, the car's destroyed, the whole tire assembly's hanging on. And I was reminded of a couple things. I get a little upset when I keep hearing the four words put together, "low-risk drug offenders". The people who are using methamphetamine and heroin in our community, they're high risk. This person's operating a motor vehicle at highway speeds. He's on his way to a construction job. People who are using meth and heroin in our community are high risk to their health. It's likely going to kill them someday or make them die much younger than they, than they planned and that their parents and brothers and sisters would ever want. They're high risk to my deputies, our highway patrolmen and our police officers who stop them while they're tweaking and arming themselves like they are. They're high risk to the people who own businesses in our community where they're robbing them at gunpoint and not afraid to fire their weapons. They're high risk to their families, abusing their children, neglecting their children, abusing their spouses. And so when I hear the term "low-risk drug offender", it just irritates me because we need to treat this problem as a high-risk problem in our community. It doesn't mean they all have to go to prison, but darn it, if they need to go to prison, then build another prison and we'll have to put a few there. Because there are some people who need a consequence for that type of activity. So it's something that you have to consider. You can't judge the success of treating drug offenders low-risk by how many prison bed days there are. You have to look at what's happening in your own community. So I have a few statistics. I didn't try to gain a lot, but we've had, Monday and Tuesday, our state's attorney opened 36 new felony drug cases. That's what our community is facing. The real reason I'd really like to be here is to listen to the questions and the comments. So that's, I want to sit down so we can get to that point because we have some important message coming from someone who's suffered what we're seeing. But I appreciate it.
If I could get someone to bring the basket down with the tickets in, we'll maybe give away a prize or two before we hear from Tina. As Ron was talking and Sheriff Milstead were talking, it made me realize that South Dakota has an issue with meth that many people may not know. On our flyers that we put out, we put our South Dakota meth seizures as 28,847 grams of meth. Sioux Falls, we had in Minnehaha County, 17,227 grams, and Lincoln County had 738. So when we think about the 28,000 grams seized, a large majority is coming from this part of the state. When we look at our youth risk behavior survey and think about the number of high school students who say they've tried meth, we know that from ninth through 12th grade, 3.8% have said in past 30 days, "I've tried meth." If we look at the ninth graders for South Dakota, that number goes up. It's 4.8%. How do we stack up nationally? Ninth graders nationally are 2%. This is an issue we need to look at. Prairie View, along with the Coalition for a Drug-Free South Dakota, is helping put this on and have the prizes. Now I would like you to take time to listen to a story of struggle, but most importantly, a struggle of recovery. Please welcome Tina.
Hi, everyone, I'm Tina. I'm here to help fight the stigma of addiction. Some people say that addiction is not a disease, they say it's a choice. And while not everyone who uses drugs or alcohol become addicted, it's affected by physical, psychological, genetic factors. But the longer you use drugs like meth, you will be addicted. Once a person becomes addicted, obtaining the drug becomes the highest priority. It becomes more important than keeping a job. It becomes more important than having a place to live. It becomes more important than family. Imagine for a moment how you would feel... Imagine for a moment how you would feel if you really, truly believed that everyone was out to get you. That you had nowhere to turn. That you were alone. You add on top of that a dose of guilt and shame. It's not a, it's not a good place to be. It's a very dark place. I know because I've been there. I first tried meth here in Sioux Falls when I went to college in the 90s. I graduated college and I moved away very fast. I, I knew that it, it had its hooks in me and I, I thought too much about it, so I left. I actually was successful in working in nuclear medicine for 15 years. And I had an accident and a horseback riding accident. And I came back here to Sioux Falls to be with my family. And I was in pain and I was depressed. And I remember the day I decided to use meth again. I remember thinking, it's only going to be for a short while. I can control it. I walked away before. I can do it again. But that's what meth does. You think you could control it, but you can't. It's a lie. I realized at the time that I wanted to quit, that I was hooked. I realized my thoughts weren't my own. I realized that my thinking wasn't clear. I could see that I wasn't holding up to my responsibilities. I wasn't a good mother. I wasn't a good daughter. I wasn't, I wasn't good at much of anything. And I tried to quit. I'm like, okay, I know this is, you know, not going where I want it to go. And I remember trying to quit. I had this little whiteboard in my kitchen and I would make a mark, trying to keep track of how many days sober so that I could hopefully celebrate because I figured it's going to get easier. But as I tried to quit on my own, it was horrible. The sickness, the pain, the depression came back tenfold. It was so horrible. At that time, I thought about killing myself. I didn't see another way out of it. Eventually, I gave up trying to be sober. I took my kids to my mother and I left. The days turned to weeks, weeks to months. I don't remember a lot of it. A lot of it I don't want to remember. I know I did things I'm not proud of. Then I was arrested. And honestly, I was relieved. I was so tired. I was tired of the lies. I was tired of the deception. I was tired of the life. I was so tired of it. So, I was sentenced to 60 months, five years in the federal prison. And I was lucky, really. I was chosen for a program called RDAB, which is a 500-hour residential drug treatment program, nine months. And the things I learned there are invaluable. I was able to learn that I could examine my thoughts, that I could choose the thoughts that would lead me where I wanted to go, that I didn't have to keep the irrational behaviors and the irrational beliefs that I had created during my drug use. And then I was able to, to challenge thoughts that were dysfunctional before my drug use. Never before could I have ever stood up in front of a bunch of people and talked like this. So it's, it's, in that respect, I've, I've gotten stronger through all of this. By accepting responsibility for the choices I made and realizing I made those choices, I learned how to make better choices. And I changed my life. The motto there was, "Change your thoughts, change your world." And it works. So when I experienced that program and I experienced the change in myself and the change in the women around me, I decided that's what I wanted to do. I wanted to be like those women who brought all those changes. So when I returned to Sioux Falls, I was released to the halfway house, the glory house. And as soon as I got into town, I heard about this place called Face It Together Sioux Falls. So I called up Dave and I said I wanted to come and talk to them. And I was so impressed by that peer recovery support resource center that I became a client. At the same time, I looked up the Smart Recovery Programs here in town because for some of you who don't know that, it is a science-based self-help group. And it's based on the cognitive behavioral therapy and motivational interviewing. And it works. So I threw myself into that. While I was still at the halfway house, I did some online training to become a smart recovery facilitator. And then I also took training at Face It Together Sioux Falls to become a recovery coach. I knew that's what I wanted to do. I started volunteering my time in both of those roles here in Sioux Falls because, and I see some familiar faces, but I, I wanted to help make a difference. And I, I volunteered until last August when my prayers were answered. I received a grant to go back to college. So now I am a full-time student at USD. I'm a junior in the Addiction Studies Program. Next year at this time, I will have my Bachelor's of Science degree and I will be a Licensed Chemical Dependency Counselor. I can do what those women did and I can help people who are stuck like I was. So what I'd like to say to all of you tonight is that if you have a loved one struggling from addiction, don't give up hope. And if you are struggling from addiction, don't give up on yourself. There is life after meth. Believe it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tina. Her story is a story of struggle, but most importantly, a story that tells us there's hope and there is recovery. But we need to know, what are those signs? How do we address the issue? It's important that each one of you who are sitting here take this information and share it with someone else. The only way we can make change for our community and our state is if we all work on the meth issue. At this time, I would like to open up for questions. I will turn on the mics down here for our panel members. And please know that any question is an important question. We will have a mic that we use to come out to you so everyone can hear the question you're asking. I think it's a valuable time to learn about meth.
So I have a ninth grader, we have a ninth grader, and I'm wondering, maybe Sheriff Milstead or gentlemen from the DEA, what you're finding in your research, why are we as a community seeing these kinds of statistics compared to the national norm?
I'll try to touch a little bit on that. And I think the scary thing that I saw in the statistics is the number of these ninth grade-type people that are experimenting or trying some of the drugs. You know, the, the juvenile crime statistics are scary to me. One of the things that, that we didn't even touch on is just in our county last year, we had 11 overdose deaths. Nine of those were opioids. So, you know, some were heroin, some were prescription opioids, some were fentanyl, and then two of them were methamphetamine. And so these are the kinds of drugs, you know, when I was in high school, excuse me, a little long time ago. But when I was in high school, they were experimenting with ditch weed and terrace butter and, and tug of war. Now they're experimenting with methamphetamine that can flatten, kill you in an overdose. And, and that doesn't account for ER business and the medical emergencies that are happening. It's a struggle. I, I guess the one point that I would like to make when I talk about community response that I think that we need to do, the, the one that seems to be missing at any great level is prevention. We have some prevention, but there's not enough. And it's not targeting the young enough, like young enough audience at the level that it should. And the second one that we're struggling with in, in addition to our enforcement is treatment. Did you hear what she said? $500, nine months residential treatment. That is expensive and very difficult to probably get in. I get a bad. And so for me, I see, this is three legs on the stool. We've talked about this before, but prevention, treatment, enforcement, I'm just one little part of it. And that, and this prevention area, it seems to me to be one of the biggest lacking areas, especially for our youth that are starting to look at drugs like this as an option.
And I would just add that in South Dakota, the prevention efforts that we can put forward, we have a limited amount of money. And right now, from our state, as pass-through, our prevention dollars are limited to alcohol only. It's only through small grants, through, if your city will help you with funding, can we talk about the drugs. The drugs like meth, the drugs like heroin. We need to have more efforts and more funding for our state for prevention efforts. It is an area that I have a passion in. I started out working in the treatment detox, worked halfway houses and realized through that, we need to start with the kids. Other questions?
I know earlier you talked about how it was being imported in. And we know kind of, if we're being realistic, that it still is being manufactured here in rural areas. As a former drug user, what, what are you doing as far as like to protect the communities? Are we still going after these small mom-and-pop, you know, drug producers or what, what is being done as far as that goes?
I can, I can touch on that and Ron can too, a little bit. We operate two major, well, there's actually three, but drug trafficking task forces in the state. And one of them is the DCIs that does, you know, throughout the state. Now, the state legislature, and I actually see some legislators here today, were effective this year in, in some programs to try to support the war on methamphetamine in particular by funding some additional state highway patrolment. Today, I met with the director of the State Division of Criminal Investigation about how that will look. So how will those officers interact with our, our local task forces, the, the federal people so that we can try to link these down? Because yes, we still have some, we have a lot of drug trafficking in the rural areas, absolutely. But I will say, I mean, the mom-and-pop labs are almost non-existent. The one-pop method we are seeing, because one thing that's really happened, and Ron touched on it, is the prices come down so low that it's not worth the risk of blowing yourself up to make this stuff. When, and, and the other thing is about the price being down low, that tells us there's a lot of dope here. You can get it really easy. Why blow your house up, burn your house down to, to get it? So that, that's what's happening. And I'm going to say it again. You already said it. This stuff is coming, you know, the precursors are coming from China. It's coming into Mexico. The drug is being made in super labs and it's coming, a vast majority of it from south of the border or, or super labs in our southern border states. I mean, that's where it's coming from. But we recognize our, our rural needs as well. And that's why I appreciate the legislative action taken. And our meeting today was very productive. I think they've got a good model to be able to try to address some of these hotspots. The one we haven't mentioned because it's not right here, but it's a huge issue in South Dakota, is the drug trafficking on our Native American reservations. They are, they are targeting our Native American population in our reservations. And it's very difficult because of jurisdictional issues to address it adequately.
Another question down here?
First of all, I'd like to thank the panel for sharing their expertise in, in all your various areas. I wanted to direct a question to Tina. Thank you for offering hope as somebody who also seeks to offer hope to others. You mentioned in your presentation here that you spent some time in federal prison and you mentioned RDAB. Can you define that, please?
Does this work? Okay. The RDAB is Residential Drug and Alcohol Program. You know how the federal people are great on their acronyms? But it's, it's a evidence-based program, based on cognitive behavioral therapy or in particular rational emotive behavior therapy, which is just saying that the things that we think cause us to feel a different way and then we act a different way. And if you can look at something a little bit differently, you'll feel that way and it changes your actions. And it, it has great success. The trouble is, is that it's a nine-month program. It's really hard to get into it. Not everybody who is eligible or who applies can do it. I was very fortunate that I was able to, to take that program. It has changed my life and I know that it can help other people change as well. And that's why I'm throwing myself into finding ways to help spread that knowledge because there's just not enough people helping.
In South Dakota, we do have meth-specific treatment programs, one East River and one West River. But this year also, there was additional funds put forward by the legislative body to add to that. We do need more meth-specific treatment. More questions?
This question's kind of for anyone. You mentioned fentanyl earlier. And I know on the news, there's a lot about meth and fentanyl together. Are they similar? Or why is that also such a popular topic?
Fentanyl is actually a synthetic version of, of an opioid, opioid? Fentanyl actually, I think is, the main use for it is it's an elephant tranquilizer. So it's, and depending on what manufacturer makes it, you've heard 100 times up to 200 times more potent than morphine, which is what you get when you go to the doctor. And it's kind of depressive when you hear, should have shared about the eight or nine opioid deaths. What opioids do is they depress your central nervous system. They depress your respiratory system to eventually, people either swallow their tongue or their heart drops so low or they'll throw up and they choke to death on their body. You know, it doesn't sound pretty, but when you actually flesh out what does an overdose look like with an opioid, that's what it is. Whereas methamphetamine is a stimulant. It gets your heart racing so fast, your temperature rises, and then your heart moves out of rhythm. Whereas with fentanyl, it's kind of the same thing, but the opposite end. Your heart slows so far down that it gets out of rhythm. And then it can't catch up and that's what eventually can cause you to...
Amy, do you have anything to add?
And one of the things that we're seeing as responders is we are seeing individuals using both in all reality. They are self-medicating with the situation of they use the, the methamphetamines for that high and then will actually use the, the fentanyl. Fentanyl is something that we use in pre-hospital setting to, to help people with pain related. And so, we see that individuals that will, actually, you know, they're having pain or, or whatever it might be, they'll actually ask for it by name. And that's when we usually know that there, there might be some type of an issue with that, that use of that drug.
I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. Being out there in the streets, I saw what was really happening. And yes, they will go from one extreme to the other. You know, they've been up for days. They start to come down. Basically, they can't sleep. They hurt. They're suffering. They'll take, you know, something to come down to drop the press. I mean, it's a back and forth. It's back and forth. I mean, they use it. They have to have something at that point. And that cycle is just so dangerous.
Can I jump in for one more?
Yes.
So I have this five-word thing speech, but it's a new one that I just came up with today after, after, after a meeting that I attended. Because we're talking about some terrible things in our community and it's really hard to do because I, you know, hard to do, because I, you know, I feel like the Grim Reaper in front of people. But there's hope, you know, and I, I really like you said, that there's hope. One of the things that we have to remember is a lot of people, there are people in our community, a lot of people that have mental health issues that are untreated. And what they do is they'll, they'll self-medicate with these drugs. And so you have co-occurring disorders of mental health combined with the use of methamphetamine or heroin, and it's a disaster. One of the things that we are looking at right now in a group that involves our hospitals, our first responder community, our, our human services with the county, our commission, our city council, is a community triage center model, where we would literally have a triage center in Sioux Falls, where when a police officer or a first responder or somebody stumbles into the emergency room with, you know, where they have drug issues, mental health issues, whatever, they'll be routed right to this triage center. It'll be staffed by medical staff to identify what the problem is and get them to the right resource. And so if I said there were doors in this triage center, one of them would be to mental health treatment. One of them would be to addiction counseling and treatment. One of them would be maybe just to sobering center to safely sober somebody out. You know, one of them might be to detox. But to try to coordinate the resources in our community. And so I'm encouraged by our first meetings, and I'm encouraged by understanding that there's a chance we can try to address this as a community. So, I mean, that's one of the things we're making. And I just think that, that, you know, I'm a cop, and I'm, I'm all for the enforcement. We really need to work on that, and I, you know, I always need more, but I recognize this is a, this prevention, and that it's huge, and so is affordable treatment, because it takes, I mean, inpatient treatment is, is, is expensive. It is very difficult for us to get, for someone to get in bed at all for inpatient treatment. And, and that's difficult. And I'll tell you about success, because you're a success story, but it's not always like that. And we have Drug Court. We have 41 people on Drug Court. Thirty of them are women, struggling with addiction, and in particular, a lot of them with methamphetamine. And if you've ever seen Drug Court, I mean, there's like 20 people that are trying to help this one person through life to get back on their feet, and they, they fail sometimes. And it's, if they have that much support, imagine how hard it is for somebody who doesn't have support, who doesn't have somebody to help them quit. And so I like your message too, where you say, "You have a loved one that's addicted, you think is addicted, give them help." You can call the cops later, but give them help. They need, they need the treatment, they need to stop, and that's an important part of trying to be successful.
Thank you. I know there's still some questions. I think our panelists will still be up here. If you have a personal question you want to ask, or if we have someone we need to talk with, and answer, excuse me, answer them, we certainly will do that. I want to thank you for spending the evening with us. I hope you go away knowing more about meth and how we as a community can make a difference. Thank you for joining us this evening.